Okay, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the ZBA's Thursday, May 8th, 2025 meeting. Let's honor our flag with the pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay.
So first, we have appeal number 2025-006, George Ilya, 71 Pine Avenue in Aquabog, Suffolk County Tax Map number 600-113-2-71, Residence B40 zoning. We received correspondence from the applicant asking the board to reconsider their rear yard setback relief to wit, relief from Chapter 301-17, where minimum, where rear yard setback is 5.9 feet and the minimum required is 60 feet.
Okay.
Good afternoon.
I have to swear a minute, again, this is a new hearing.
Yeah.
I swear, tell truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Name and address, please.
George Ilya, 71 Pine Avenue, Aquabog, New York.
Welcome.
Thank you. Want to take this time to apologize, I misunderstood our conversation last time. Thought, I heard was, maybe because I wanted it so bad, that's why I thought I heard that, but I misunderstood, so I wrote a letter to you guys, asking to, to, uh, we discussed the relief on the overhang, which was my original intention of trying to keep that and help out with everything else, which I did. Not help out, but remove everything else that was needed, so I'm just asking for that relief again.
What is that structure? Can you explain to us what that is? What is it used for?
It's just an overhang to protect from the rain, it's open.
Covered deck.
Covered deck. Well, not deck, there's, there's decking on the floor, on the ground. You know, there's no, there's no post or anything like that, just, just wood on the floor. It's just an overhead to protect from the rain, that's it.
What's the function of the chimney?
Uh, it's just fireplace.
It's a fire, outdoor fireplace?
Outdoor fireplace, yes. And that's on the exterior of the overhang.
Are there any walls or wood slats?
Uh, yes, there are wood slats that can be removed, they're just, they're there for decoration. It's not, they're just, they're big spaces and they're not, not there for any purpose or anything like that.
Is it around all three sides?
Yes.
And then the fourth side would be the exterior of the home?
Right. So, uh, I did, did mention in the, in the letter that the coverage on the property, I, I would, I would definitely, if I can, or if you would allow, I would remove the driveway, the asphalt driveway, to, uh, in exchange for keeping the coverage on the overhang.
So, I was trying to figure that out. Your flooring is basically pervious, it's just wood that water goes through. If the water was to get underneath of it, it just goes right through it?
Correct.
Is there any air conditioning, heating, anything in that structure?
No, no.
Lighting, anything else?
Uh, there's two lights, yes.
Okay.
So.
Can I?
You have to get sworn in.
I'll get out the paperwork. You got to step up, please. Sean, right?
He hired me to do work over on the property.
I swear, tell truth, the whole truth, nothing but truth, so help you God. Please state your name and address.
Ken Schuman, 12 Pegs Lane. Mr. Ilya hired us months back to do some work over on the property, and then this happened with, uh, his sheds and everything else, and we plied together for the variance, helped him out. As far as this back deck, it really is just a platform. The biggest thing is it has a non-pervious roof. But when you add up the square footage, you're about a little over 500 square foot on it. And one of the things that you mentioned, it seemed like it was an important factor in your decision, was the impervious lot coverage. If we remove the asphalt from the driveway and a little walk to that shed that's being removed, we'll have well over 600, maybe 700 square foot, so we'd offset that overhang by 200 feet, square feet.
How do the neighbors feel about this?
One neighbor loves it, because it doesn't look like a mobile home. Once you take it away, then it looks like a mobile home again. And there's already several mobile homes in the area, so, uh, that is, that is kind of important, too.
To me, it just seems a little excessive to remove the driveways.
Yeah.
Well, we want to, want to make a compromise, and it seemed like the impervious lot coverage was a big deal.
Well, it's not a big deal, but it has to be approved, or, or something has to be removed. But having an asphalt driveway is definitely a plus, especially during the winter months. So, I, I don't know.
May I ask a question?
Go ahead.
So, the structure, uh, that you're seeking zoning board of relief tonight, is the structure approximately 22.9 feet by 30.4 feet, correct?
30.4?
Thirty, 30.4.
Maybe my calculations were off, then. Yes, mine were. So we'll almost be equal, then?
Right. So, you're not looking... So there's this other wood described also as a wood plat, 12.5 by 11.9.
Yeah, that's another one that would be glad to get rid of. It's just a little platform that they put a table on.
And that one, would you agree, sits right on the property line?
Yes, it does.
And you would agree to remove that small platform, is that correct?
Yes.
And then ju- just a quick question, on the drawing that's submitted, the frame shed, is that where the frame shed is now going? Because you, you're going to be moving the prior...
No, that's, that's being moved off the pri- it's already moved off the property line, five feet.
Correct.
Uh, and that's already been done? Uh, we're trying to get things moving already. The one shed in the front was supposed to be moved last week, but weather and everything postponed that. It's emptied, ready to go, the plastic one's gone, the little one.
And to piggyback off that, the, um, the shed that was moved was actually made smaller.
Yeah.
Okay. So I, the question I'm trying to get to, because I agree with Leroy, that the, uh, it's, you don't want to tear up your driveway, but the asphalt that you've run that you had going to the shed, if the shed's moved, is that, that portion, that little asphalt run, getting demolished anyway?
Yes.
Yeah, and that, that'd help, yeah.
No, I'm just, just asking, I may even say the requirement, but if it's happening already...
Yeah.
It's not going to anywhere, so, yeah.
Okay.
Ready?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Chairman and the rest of the board, with respect to appeal number 2025-006, I move that the appeal of George Ilya, 71 Pine Avenue, Aquabog, STM number 600-113-2-71, Residence B40, RB40 zoning, will be reopened to rehear the rear yard setback relief for variances and/or relief from Chapter 301-17, where front yard setback is 22.2 feet, where minimum required is 50 feet, where rear yard setback is 5.9 feet, where minimum required is 60 feet, where impervious surface coverage is 26.5%, where the maximum allowed is 15%, and Chapter 301-15, where accessory structure rear yard setback is .3 feet, where minimum required is 20 feet, where accessory structure side yard setback is 8 feet, where minimum required is 20 feet, where accessory structure front yard setback is 7.3 feet, where accessory structures are not permitted in a front yard, and where accessory structures are required to be 10 feet from any other building, be granted, subject to, the 22.9 by 30.4-foot, um, roofed overhang must remain a porch and not be enclosed, or a conditioned room. You're going to remove the 12-foot by 11.9-foot platform along the property line, described tonight as a platform used for a table, and all other conditions in the zoning board of appeals determination 2025-006 dated March 13th, 2026, remain in full force and effect, and also in accordance with the applications and sketches with amendments thereto, if any, as filed with the building department.
Second. Mr. Portia.
Aye.
Mrs. Soweski.
Aye.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
Gazilla.
Aye.
And I vote aye, so your variance has been greeted?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you.
Good night. Thank you very much.
Next, we have appeal number 2025-015, Deborah Thompson, 6 Gladys Road, Wading River, Suffolk County Tax Map number 600-31-1-31, Residence B80 zoning, for a proposed single-family dwelling. Applicant requests variances and/or relief from Chapter 301-31, where proposed front yard setback is 49.8 feet and the minimum required is 60 feet, where proposed rear yard setback is 23 feet, where minimum required is 75 feet, and where proposed side yard abutting side street setback is 33.4 feet, where minimum required is 60 feet.
Good evening.
Good evening, this evening.
Charles Cuddy for the applicant, I have an office at 445 Griffin Avenue, Riverhead, New York. With me tonight is the applicant, Deborah Thompson, and her daughter. This has a, but before the speaking, I guess I should say, we didn't file the affidavit of mailing and posting, and that's been done, and I think that will be recognized.
Uh, yes, I've received all the proof of mailing and posting.
This was a variance history that you granted in October of '22 for a house. Uh, the house was actually constructed, and just as it was being finished, a fire broke out, and it burned to the ground. We subsequently got a demolition permit, removed all of the debris, and we're now back with another plan, plans a little bit different than the last one. The, one of the things that's different is that we had a garage underneath the house in the first rendition. We don't have a garage down underneath the house. Two things stopped it. One was, they had a very severe rainstorm, uh, when the house was under construction, and water went into the garage. Subsequently, as the architect noted, um, the rainstorms have been, come worse, so they have a garage that's above ground now, uh, so that's significant. The plan is a different plan than was laid out before, uh, but I don't think the variances are significantly different. The rear yard, or the yard that's really to the east, uh, is very similar, was before than a few feet difference in, in that variance. The variances that are for the road frontage, and don't forget, this is a lot that has three sides to it, because it's on a corner. So, any of the variances that we get are mandated by much greater setbacks. And the other thing to beware of is that this lot also is in the RB80 district, and it's a half-acre lot, so there are a lot of constraints that go with it. But I think in each case, the variance is necessary in the type of architecture and the design of the house. And I would say to you that I don't think the neighbors are going to be hurt by this, no neighbor has complained. Certainly environmentally, it's a residential area, so there's very little impact. And I think all, the alternative is to come back with a small house, but I think this is the house that she's designed, it's not much different from the other house in total size, um, and I would hope that the board could find, uh, this to be a favorable result, because she's waited a while and have a house burned down, and she'd like to build it again.
Mr. Cuddy, it's, it's a slightly different location, is that correct?
That's right.
It, why is that?
I, I think when the architect looked at it, uh, she tried to keep it back from the pool, which is on the far side of the house, on, uh, and I think that, um, she also wanted to design it so the garage could be in, at above ground, and so that's part of the layout difference.
Thank you.
Mr. Cuddy, the last time this matter was heard in October of 2022, there was one neighbor who, I believe, spoke and expressed some concern regarding buffering along the rear property line?
Yes. That neighbor also had an attorney call me today and asked the same question, and we gave him the same answer, which was, and Ms. Thompson is here, that there's going to be nothing done to the back area except to try and keep it, because it's a steep slope there. She's going to plant landscaping there and maintain it as it is.
Right. So, uh, at the hearing back in October of 2022, you had acquiesced to the neighbor's request to maintain the vegetative buffer?
Mm-hmm.
And would you still agree to do that today?
Yes, I think, absolutely, yes.
Okay. Is anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this variance? No? Good. Who has this?
I do. Mr. Chairman, with respect to appeal number 2025-015, I move that the appeal of Deborah Thompson, 6 Gladys Road, Wading River, Suffolk County Tax Map, number 600-31-1-31, Residence B80 zoning, for variances and/or relief from Chapter 301-31, where proposed front yard setback is 49.8 foot and minimum required is 60 foot, where proposed rear yard setback is 23 foot and minimum required is 75 foot, and where proposed side yard of budding street setback is 33.4 foot, where minimum required is 60 foot, be, oh, be approved with the, uh, requirement that the rear yard buffer, which was required by the ZBA determination of September 22, 2022, be granted in accordance with the applications and sketches with amendments thereto, if any, as filed with the building inspector.
Second. Mr. Prochetta.
Aye.
Soweski.
Aye.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
Gazilla.
Aye.
And I vote aye, so the variance has been granted.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Good luck. Good night, Mr. Cuddy.
Thank you.
Good night.
Next is appeal number 2025-017, Lawrence Luce, 752 Sound Shore Road, Jamesport, Suffolk County Tax Map number 600-7-3-32, Residence A40 zoning, to legalize an existing deck. Applicant requests variances and/or relief from Chapter 301-91B, where proposed side yard setback is 9.9 feet and the minimum required is 25 feet, and Chapter 219-14A2, where existing deck is not specifically allowed development under Chapter 219-14 subsection B. All development in bluff areas is prohibited unless specifically allowed by Chapter 219-14 subsection B.
Are you aware, sir? Uh, God, thank you. I swear, tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Please state your name and address.
Kevin Springer, uh, 48 Columbine Avenue North, Hampton Bay's, New York.
Good. Right ahead.
Okay. So, we have a couple of things I would like to point out. The deck in question was actually built in 2002. Uh, the zoning back then was actually Res C, which was a 10-foot accessory structure setback. But as we, when we went to get some building permits for some basement stuff, this has reared its ugly head, obviously. Um, the, there's a few things I want to point out. A, the deck, not very big, um, it's the only way out, the side door. It is basically at ground level. The lot itself is very constricting, because the lot is only 51 feet in width. It's a very long, uh, obviously, it's overlooking the bluff. But at the time, there was obviously no permits put in for the actual deck itself. As for, um, the, I did do a overview shot as precedent, and I was also in the actual, you know, not having any effect on the neighbor or the neighborhood, um, there are, and I think I printed a 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, it says, there's about 10 houses, which I will hand in, that show, it's actually, there's, multiply these houses are the same with decks. Now, I don't know if they all have permits, but they all basically have either decks on the side or decks out the rear. This was put on the side, which lessens the setback to the bluff. And it was actually, when you'll, when you'll look at this, you'll see that there's multiple houses in just this little vicinity that are actually built much, the full house are built much closer to the bluff than our deck is. Our deck is out the side, not even out the rear. So, as far as it goes with the neighborhood, I don't really see any issues there. I have sent out all the appropriate letters, have not heard back from anybody, including the one neighbor to the right, and I don't think Mr. Luce has heard from anybody about anything, so, um, you know, unless you have any questions, I'm, I'm here.
I guess there's no one in the audience that wants to speak on this variance, but...
Are there any?
What's that?
Are there any railings on the deck?
Are there what?
Any railings?
No.
No.
No. Just, it's a single step up, I have, we have a picture of it, if you would like to see it. Uh, Mr. Luce's father is actually the one that built it many years ago, but he is now since deceased, and that, again, that's why it has come up. Mr. Luce, at the time, did not know that there was a permit needed until we started doing some other work.
About how many posts does it have in, in the ground, you know, maybe like five or 10?
Yeah, so it's 11, it's 11 by 18, and the, so if you, for construction purposes, in the front side, you know, facing, facing the bluff itself would be three going across that way, and it would be five to six coming back towards the street. And then again, the same, the same three in the other one.
So approximately four or five would be within the coastal erosion zone, but the remainder of those posts?
Yes, correct.
Would be beyond.
Yeah, it's about a third of the deck would be in the coastal erosion, the rest of the deck is actually behind the line. We're not that far outside, you know, I think, what are we, um, 40, you know, we're supposed to be 50, I think we're at 42, 43, so it's...
Forty-one, six.
Yeah, I have a, I have an older survey, this is not the right one, but that, yes, it's, I know those numbers are pretty close.
And no portion of that deck has foundation, correct?
No. Nope. Again, I have, we have a picture of it, if you want me to submit it, be more than happy.
Yes, please.
And your client would have no problem from refraining from making the deck any bigger, right?
Correct.
Well, I'm close.
No. We're not, there's no intentions, you know, it's just, the lot, even though it is long, it is narrow, so there's really not a lot to do. Uh, we already know that we're at our max, anyway. You know, we can, at, we were conformed at one point, and it was built in 2002, but in 2004, the property was upzoned, so that, that in, became the bigger issue.
So can you submit the, uh, photograph, and you could put it right on the, uh, the picture of the deck?
Yeah.
Is that the picture of the deck?
No.
No, oh, you want the picture of the deck?
Yeah. Not that, Heather.
Just so, we could probably put both.
Well, that's, that's to put in the record, anyway, just to... So the railings have been removed off of that, that's...
Do you want me to pass it on, or do you want to put it under the camera?
Put it on the camera. So I don't know if all members of the zoning board of appeals heard, the railings have been removed.
Very simple.
They're okay.
Yeah. Nothing extravagant. Again, the house, the house itself is not even that big, so, you know, it's 20 by 48, I think, so, a little under a thousand.
On the, I guess, the east side of the driveway, it's like Belgium block?
On the, on your east side?
Is that yours?
No, that's...
How many blocks did he put? Is there any left in Belgium?
Sir, he made it longer since. I, I don't know.
Anything else?
That's it.
Who's got this?
I got it.
Right ahead, sir.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I move that the appeal of number 2025-017, move the appeal of Lawrence Luce, 752 Sound Shore Road, Jamesport, SCTM number 600-7-3-32, Residence A-40, RA-40 zoning, for variance and/or relief from Chapter 301-9 subdivision 1 subdivision B, where proposed side yard setback is 9.9 feet, where minimum required is, is 25 feet, and Chapters 219-14 sub A, sub 2, where existing deck is not specifically allowed development under Chapter 219-14 subsection B. All development in bluff areas is prohibited unless specifically allowed by Chapter 219-14 subsection B, be approved, subject to, that there be no further encroachment into the coastal erosion hazard area, and no foundation for the deck, the foundation to the deck shall be limited to the, I believe, it was 11 footing, you said?
Say that again?
How many footings did you say, 11?
No, the deck is 11 feet, uh, in width.
How many footings did you say you were going to?
Well, there's three across the front, and then mostly, probably five to six tops.
All right. Be, be limited to that amount. And in accordance with the applications and sketches with amendments thereto, if any, as filed with the building inspector.
Second. Mr. Prochetta.
Aye.
Mrs. Soweski.
Aye.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
And Mr. Gazilla. And I vote aye, so the variance has been granted.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Hey, Marie, is this your survey of this property?
Heather, aside, thank you. So, nobody's here. Hey, Marie. Nobody's here, what do we do now? Do you do anything?
She just reads it to the right.
All right. Last, you want me to read?
Yes. Okay, go ahead.
So, appeal number 2025-011, 1086 Old Country Road LLC, 1086 Old Country Road, Riverhead, Suffolk County Tax Map number 600-108-3-19, shopping center zoning, use of cannabis retail dispensary. Um, applicant requests variances and/or relief from town code Chapter 301-283.20, where proposed site is located within 1,000 feet of a school, where no retailer or onsite consumption establishment shall be established or located within 1,000 feet, measured from the nearest property lines of each of the affected parcels of any school, library, or daycare facility. The zoning board of appeals heard this and left the matter open for written comment, um, after, let's see, it was April 24th, 2025, and the zoning board of appeals adjourned for written comment and reserved the right of the zoning board to ask additional questions and possible notice and requirement for the applicant to amend application for relief. At this time, if there's a board of any questions, we did receive additional submissions. So this afternoon, from the applicant's attorney, we received a supplemental submission in support of the application, of which I circulated the digital copy to all of the board members and counsel, and also provided hard copies prior to the meeting. In addition, member Portia provided, just before the meeting, we have articles, which I'll read, um, just the titles and dates. Um, we have the Riverhead Central School District Health and Safety Committee meeting minutes from September 13th of 2023. We also have an article from the Daily News on March 3rd, 2025, an additional article from Center Marches Eastport.
Heather, I'm sorry, is there any way you could read the?
The title.
Titles.
All right. Um, so back... All right. Um, so backtracking to the Daily News article, 12 kids fall sick at Long Island Middle School after eating weed gummies. Then the, um, patch article dated March 4th, 2025, consequences at school district where kids got sick from gummies. And then an additional article, Riverhead Local, February 14th, 2022, a student was transported to Conic Bay Medical Center after having difficulty breathing after reportedly consuming a chocolate edible inside the school. Um, in addition, we, um, member Portia provided the Cannabis Corridor 3 map by the town of Riverhead.
And just let the record reflect, those are the articles we've referred to at the last hearing.
So at this time, um, the, does the board want to close the written comment period, close the hearing and set a reserve decision date?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So we, the next meeting date is June 12th of 2025.
Great.
So the reserve decision will be made at the Zoning Board of Appeals meeting on June 12th, 2025.
So moved.
Just for clarity, can, can we take a vote on that again?
Yes.
Because I think before we announced the date, I wasn't sure if everybody had voted. I apologize. Okay. Mr. Portia.
Aye.
Mrs. Soweski.
Aye.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
Mr. Gazilla.
Aye.
And I vote aye. Any minutes, Heather?
Um, no, we have not yet received the minutes from the April 24th, 2025 meeting. Um, so...
And our next meeting date?
Yeah, June 12th, 2025. We have no appeals for the May 22nd meeting, so that meeting will be canceled.
Okay, do we have a motion for adjourn?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
For adjourn?